Everybody to the joint meeting between the City of Brunswick Commission, the Glen County Board of Commissioners. We're here today to hear an update on the Superfund site presented by Mr. Frank Anastasia. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. Ms. Thompson, you want to come and introduce?
Good afternoon. I don't know if this thing is on. No? Okay. I wasn't sure if it was for virtual.
It's on.
It is on? Okay. Good afternoon. My name is Rachel Thompson, Executive Director of Glen Environmental Coalition. First, I did want to start off by thanking you all for allowing us to share this update. We really appreciate you taking your time out of your day to listen and hear some information. Frank Anastasia is the Glen Environmental Coalition's Technical Advisor, and we have EPA grants, technical assistance grants, that allow us to hire a third-party consultant that helps represent the information to the general public. So he weeds through the thousand-page documents and boils it down to a report to me that then we try to get out to the community. Those technical assistance reports are on our website. There are some updates we wanted to share with you for this year, and so I'm going to go ahead and let Frank come up, and he's got a presentation for you guys. We do have a PDF of this presentation if anyone would like for us to share that afterwards. Thank you guys so much.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thanks, Rachel, and thank you all for letting us come here. We prepared this briefing to update you on the Superfund site's status here, and I'm going to go through it. There's a lot of information in here, and I'm not going to read slides to you. Y'all can read. One thing I'll mention, too, is anything that you see in here that piques your interest, there's a wealth of information on the GEC website that you can find links to the full reports or my technical memos and their technical assistance reports that they publish that have a lot more detail. And we can also direct you to EPA, additional documents that are available on EPA's website. So I'll wait and let y'all get situated before I start.
How are you doing?
All right. Okay. All right.
How are you?
So y'all have had these Superfund sites in your community for a long time, and I know there's been a lot of back and forth over the years, so we're not going to explain Superfund to you. But this quick graphic shows you the steps in the process, and y'all have been, you know, available, you've been in these for all these stages with the various sites. And here's the goal, you know, the target, and we're getting close to action on a couple of these sites. So cleanup and monitoring is where you want to be. But basically, this program, it makes sense logically. Sometimes it's not implemented correctly or logically. But you start out by defining the problem, and then the feasibility study is where you evaluate solutions to the problem. And of course, you can't find the best solution until you really know the problem. So a lot of times, it seems like you're getting nowhere, and people keep doing this remedial investigations phase. But eventually, you assemble some options, you decide what's best. EPA will propose what they think is the best solution. There's opportunities for public and official comment, and then something's decided upon. And then the people who are responsible will develop a plan to do it. EPA and state agencies review it and approve it, and then you can start doing cleanup and monitoring. So we have, for your four sites, we're in all these different phases at different places. So of course, your four sites are LCP Chemical, the Terry Creek Hercules Outfall Ditch area, the Hercules 209 landfill, and Brunswick Wood Preserving. So we'll go through the most complex one and the most active one first, and that is the LCP Chemical site. As you all know, it has a very complex, very long industrial history. And the cleanup, since 1990, in various stages, or maybe even sooner than that, buildings were demolished, contaminated materials were removed from the site, and this part of the site with all the old industrial activities, that's all been razed, and it's vacant property now. So EPA divides these projects into like chunks, and they're called operable units. So this OU designation is Operable Unit 1. And it can be a physical, separate part of a site, or it can be a conceptual thing, like groundwater across the whole site, or just the area where the industrial activity occurred. And so in this case, we have one portion of the LCP site that's the marsh and estuary. And the current status of that is the remedial design, the final design, has been approved, and that's a multi-year process. Contracting is in process now, and that takes some time, you know, like any building project like y'all deal with. You have to first come up with a plan, you have to get it designed, and then approved, and then you have to go through procurement of contractors. So they're starting that process right now. And the main elements of the remediation of the marsh and estuary areas will be dredging the highly contaminated sediments, and then covering them in the marsh area. But first, in the creeks where they're going to dredge the highest contaminated sediments to about 18 inches, they're going to remove the material, manage it appropriately, dewater and have it disposed off-site. And then they're going to backfill these dredged areas with 12 inches of clean material, and then they're going to restore these areas with the native plants. And this is a nice, we didn't skip one slide, did we? No, good. This is a, yes, we did. This is the area of this remediation that's going to go on. The blue is the areas where they're going to be dredged and backfilled, the lighter blue color, and the, the...
That's blue?
No, this is, well, blue-green. Some people tell me, including my wife, that I'm colorblind. But I disagree. Anyway, that's where they're going to do those type of activities. Okay, we're having a, we're doing okay. But where's my schematic diagram? There it is. So this is a nice schematic that shows you in a little cartoon fashion the different steps that go on in the dredging, de-watering of sediments, and then disposal, removal off-site. And the important thing I want y'all to note is there's a lot of protective measures that'll be used to stop any kind of redistribution of contamination, things like silt fences and curtains that they put in aquatic environments, sediment traps, things like that. But when they dredge this material and stockpile it in a protected way, you go through various steps of de-watering it and getting the sediment dry enough to manage it, and that water gets treated, tested, and disposed in some manner. The sediment's the same way. They'll be tested and disposed according to their chemical characteristics. So main thing is, you know, nothing's going to be, all of this dredged material is going to be disposed off-site.
What's the primary contaminant besides mercury?
There's mercury, there are a variety of chemicals in the groundwater that are semi-volatile organic contaminants. But in the sediments, there's mercury, there's a host of heavy metals, there's PCBs in some areas, you know, a variety of contaminants. Rachel, do you have, you know, anything to add?
Mercury, PCBs, lead are three of the primary concerns in the marsh, but there are others as well.
What'd you say was going to be done with the water?
Well, it'll be treated to remove various contaminants along the way by different methods, and then it's, they'll be sampled at different stages, and it'll be disposed of. It should be cleaned to concentrations that would be able to be put into a sanitary sewer. I don't think they'll be discharging it to the, back into the system, but they may. I'm not certain about that. That's a fine point that was a level of detail we didn't get to yet here. But I can follow up and let you know for sure that.
Yeah, I can find out. I just wanted to...
Your schematic says that it's disposed back into a creek.
Okay, so they're going to dump that into the creek. That was approved. Okay. Thank you. So other areas in the marsh where there's contamination at a lower level are going to be covered by what they call the thin layer covers. So 11 acres of marsh is going to be covered. And there was a two-year pilot study with different types of material and different thicknesses and different, and also revegetation. And over these years, every quarter, four times a year, they went out and assessed it, they sampled, they took pictures, they looked at air photos, and the, both of these cap materials and both thicknesses appear to work out pretty well. You did have a couple of storms that were significant over this two-year period, and the thin layer covers weren't eroded to any significant degree, and they held up pretty well, and the revegetation's going along well, too. So originally, when the proposed plan and the decision document came out for this, there was going to be an in-channel cap, excuse me, cap of sand placed in areas that were going to be dredged. But upon reconsidering this, they're no longer going to cap any in-channel areas where there's significant water flow. They're dredging more and removing more of that. So they're going to dredge about 50% more sediment than originally was estimated. It was about 20,000 cubic yards of sediment originally was going to be excavated, dredged, and now it's up to 35,000 or 32,000. So there's 10,000 more cubic yards more of highly contaminated sediment that's going to be removed.
Hercules, I mean Hercules, Honeywell is footing the tab on this?
Yes.
And I must have missed something. I thought most of that stuff had already been cleaned up. I thought they're ready to put a golf course out there or something.
The surface soil's in a different area, which we'll talk about in a minute, another operable unit. That has been removed. So that's what you're thinking about.
This is the marsh, yeah.
This is the marsh areas and creeks. So an important element of this is the post-closure long-term monitoring plan to see how the remedy's performing. This work was designed to do a certain thing, and so there's a monitoring program EPA requires for following. In this situation, the final design, when they submitted the near-final design, the long-term monitoring proposal was woefully inadequate, is I think the best way to describe it. It didn't come close to what an adequate plan would be. When they approved the final plan, they told Honeywell, you got to go back to the drawing board, basically, for the long-term monitoring plan. You're not looking at enough aquatic organisms. You're not looking at a long enough period of time. They only proposed a five-year period, and some of the, some of the elements of it, you would only have a sampling of something at one year and five years. So they sent them back to the drawing board. They met, EPA and Georgia EPD met with Honeywell through January and February, and I think maybe even some more meetings. But they decided not to hold up the cleanup, so, because this long-term monitoring plan wouldn't be put in effect for a number of years anyway, a couple of years. So they're going to go ahead and do this. Meanwhile, they're going to be working together to get a revised long-term monitoring plan going. And EPA has committed to, to holding public meetings here in Brunswick in person, they hope, you know, if things go well. They say they want to come down here in person and talk to people, and they're going to be issuing fact sheets before any construction starts. They want to inform the community, and, you know, they say they hope to get down here in person. Now, this, another element of this site, the operable unit, too, the groundwater in the cell buildings. Now, this covers groundwater across the entire site, and it also includes the high contamination around the former cell buildings area where a lot of mercury was used. They've recently submitted a report called a remedial investigation report and a risk assessment that's based on saying, we know where the contamination is, how far it is, how contaminated it is. And the draft report's under review now by EPA and the state. There's reports, the final revised reports, based on the comments from the regulators, is due the end of this year. Again, they want to have public meetings about this. The next step, if you remember the chart in the beginning, the feasibility study, where you look at the best ways to solve the problem, will begin in early 2023. An interesting element to this, we were just informed from the project manager at EPA, there's a new enhanced, invigorated remedy review board that's going to look at this proposed remedy before it becomes final during public comment periods. And communities will have an opportunity to make presentations to this review board. In the past, it's been EPA has a public meeting. They say, here's what we're going to do. People have 30 days, and then maybe 45 days, maybe 60 days to write in and comment. EPA reads everything and responds in the written document. They say, well, you said you wanted more stuff removed, but guess what? We're not going to do it. In this case, whatever EPA's proposing, communities will be able to voice their concerns to this review board before the final decisions are made. And it won't be just the project people at EPA and the state deciding. There's like an oversight board. So I think that's a pretty important improvement. So we'll look far to see what happens with that. In this case, this is a diagram that shows the level of mercury when they sampled soil around these cell building areas. That's one, and that's another one. At different depths, they found visibly, you know, observable droplets of mercury, and they found it all the way down to 30 feet below sea level, below the sea level. So that's maybe as much as 40 feet below ground. So in certain places, these, these areas here, at the deepest depth, they saw elemental mercury in little silver globules and droplets. This is a big problem. But there's a level of, below that level, so at about 35 to 40 feet below sea level, is a cemented sandstone layer, and they didn't punch through that to look for mercury. But there's no groundwater contamination by mercury in the lower groundwater below the cemented sandstone. So that's, that's a good thing. So this area, I think, is the biggest challenge for EPA to decide what can we do to take care of it. So that'll be very interesting to see.
You said there isn't any mercury in the groundwater?
There isn't any mercury in the groundwater below the cemented sandstone. So all through the satia formation, there is mercury. In fact, let's see, the next slide shows, well, this is naphthalene, another contaminant. It's one of the contaminants in the groundwater that has the highest toxicity. So that's why we chose this slide to show you. This level here, I'm really trying hard not to zap you in the eye with my pointer. This level here, this yellow, is above an action level, a level of concern, and this represents groundwater in the lower satia formation. So that's down above the cemented sandstone. It's stratified by like an upper and a lower area. And these yellow, the far away, you know, over here is, is the marsh and the creek, and then you have the Turtle River. So you have levels of this contaminant, naphthalene, at a level of concern that you wouldn't want to drink that would, is considered probably, I haven't seen the risk assessment yet, but probably if you drank it, would present unacceptable human health risks. And there's, there's a lot of it in the center of the site as well. So this is an example, and this report that this came out of has maps like this for every contaminant. So this is an example of something if anyone really wanted to dig into it. There's a lot of information available.
Just about all those buildings are now gone, correct?
Yes, ma'am. Yep, all gone. And that, that's part of this OU3. The third element of the LCP site is, does not include the cell buildings area, but it's all the soils in the uplands area, all the areas where they performed these industrial activities in the past. As I said in the beginning, over the course of EPA's activities out here, a lot of materials removed, the industrial facilities were demolished and razed and hauled off. So recently, you know, it's a year and a half ago, sorry, that's not the pointer. The, well, we're going the wrong way. I apologize for this. This is skipping. It's my clicker, my problem. I'm sorry. I don't know how we got there. Here we are. September 2020, they put out this decision document, the Record of Decision. Here's what we're going to do, folks. No further action. All the stuff we've done so far, the removal of all the material is acceptable. It reduces risks to acceptable levels, except if the site was used for residential use in the future. EPA has theories, you know, conceptual scenarios for residential exposures or industrial exposures, and the residential exposures includes like most, the most sensitive kind of receptor, a pregnant woman, and then babies and kids who might be out playing in the dirt and eating dirt. So if that was the case, this site still represents too much of a risk, a human health risk.
How many acres is that, OU3?
Oh, you know, it's the, I don't know. It's a big part of the site.
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five acres.
Kind of eighty, yeah.
Seventy-five acres. So the fix is, we won't let anyone develop it for residential purposes. It's zoned industrial now, and that's the way it shall be. And there is some residual contamination at some high levels in some very small parcels of land. This stuff, again, the ROD, the Record of Decision, y'all could get from the EPA website and get into in more detail if you'd like.
When you say we won't let it be developed for residential, who is the...
EPA and the Georgia EPD are, I've got a slide on this in a minute, but they're working to basically create deed restrictions. The term in the business is institutional controls, and there's something called a universal environmental covenant that EPA and Georgia have been working on. But it will ultimately be up to local, state and local agencies, organizations to enforce this. And so if, well, first of all, hopefully...
Is it optional for us to have, to honor those deed restrictions?
Like I said to, I'm sorry, is it optional to have the deed restriction?
I'm saying if they're put in place on the federal side, it sounds like...
Well, it's lodged with the state court. It's a state, it's a state thing.
Okay.
And, and so local agencies, like, I envision this as like building inspectors permitting programs. If someone came to you all, the right organization to get a permit to think about building a residential development, the deed, the property records show you can't do that. So it's up to local authorities to be the police and the watchdogs about this kind of thing. So I was saying that there's some residual small areas that another government agency, the Agency for Toxic Substance AT, Toxic Substances Registry and Disease Control, the ATSDR, they did their own health risk assessment of this a few years back, and they said that there's little, and they did this assessment on a very fine grid, small plots of land. And they said in these, for instance, in these one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, these nine areas out of more than 200, the levels of PCBs or mercury were too high if you were going to have residential development. And so EPA says, we're not going to allow that, so this material is not of concern. We stick with our no further action. And that was a big point of controversy from comments from the community and organizations like GEC and probably y'all who, who took issue with this. Because, you know, here's one agency saying there's a problem, and the other agency saying there's not a problem. But it's a different way to do the risk assessment, and it also has this overlay of prohibiting residential development. And it also has this overlay of prohibiting residential development. So in this area, there will also be institutional controls, no residential development, this universal environmental covenant, and as I said, it'll be enforced by state and local government agencies. So that's, that's the LCP site in a nutshell where we are. Work on the estuary and marsh remediation should begin pretty soon, you know, getting close to action. If y'all want to ask any questions about this site before we move on to Terry Creek, we could do that, or I could keep going and we can circle back. And y'all can ask any questions about anything you want at the end.
Go ahead and go to Terry Creek.
Okay, yes, sir. So for Terry Creek, what we've got going is, again, multiple operable units. And the thing that's on the front burner is the outfall ditch, where contaminated wastewater from the toxine production flowed for many years through. That's going to be, it's, the remedial design is almost complete. They, just in January, they approved what they call a 95% design, which is draft final. So they've worked out almost all of the details. And they're expecting today, March 10th, that was the schedule that EPA project manager told us a few weeks ago. That's what they're hoping they'll finally stamp approved on the design plan for this part of work. And then they'll be able to begin contracting this summer. And the remedial action work at this part of the site will include basically removing the existing drainage ditch area and contaminating material with it and constructing a new one that's, that's better. It'll be lined with concrete, armored with riprap. They'll also cover, backfill and cover and armor the old drainage ditch path to make sure that it, to protect it against erosion. And then also institutional controls here will be employed. It will, another environmental covenant, and it'll have restrictions on the land use. It'll say you can't drill wells and produce water from underground for any, probably any purpose, certainly not any domestic use. And then afterwards, of course, there's just like the long-term monitoring plan was part of the, I mentioned was part of the marsh plan. There'll be routine monitoring afterwards to see if this is being effective. Oh, I should say at Terry Creek also, this is the first step. And EPA and Georgia EPD want to see what, if anything, this ditch cleanup and new ditch activity will do to the contaminant levels they're seeing in Terry Creek and the other creeks and the waterways to that side of this part of the land. And then they're going to look at what options for the other operable units, the, the further areas. Because, you know, you can see this was for years and years such a feature that loaded this whole area with the contamination from the toxine. So now what do we do with OU two, the dredge spoil areas, OU three is the creeks? So again, we're getting close to, close to action, really close. Y'all should see construction this year. So the fourth site is the Hercules 009 landfill. And it's on the eastern side of Golden Isles Parkway, right? South of the Nally Automotive Dealership. And it's this area here, this was an old sand pit that was mined out till they hit groundwater. These are all over the country, all over the world. People sell the sand when they hit groundwater and you can't dig any more sand without the walls falling in on you. And when the sand mining is over, people said, hey, I got a hole in the ground. Maybe I can make money having people pay me to dump stuff in. So that's what they did. This site went through the whole investigation process, the super fund process. And the solution that they came up with, the fix, was to encapsulate with, they mixed, they, they had contaminated sediment down along here and in some other areas. They found contamination that had run off with surface water, silting sediments. And they brought it back to the site. They, they mixed it with a cement material, maybe some clay, and they covered it over. And they dredged out, there was a stormwater pond where water had come down. They cleaned that up and they called it done. They installed groundwater monitoring wells around. And that was a fix that was done and recorded as complete a while back. But there's recent, there's always been the understanding of benzene in groundwater that's offsite, that's beyond this stabilized waste material. And for 10 years, EPA, well, EPA tried to get the PRPs here, Hercules, to do investigations in this area to see if the remediation was working, if the stabilized waste cement mixture was not leaching contaminants into the groundwater. And they, because of this one well here that had so much contamination all the time, it took 10 years to get access to the site, according to Hercules.
Where's your dot?
I'm sorry?
Where's your, where's your dot? Where are you pointing to? Okay, it's just.
The, so in 2020, they finally did some groundwater investigations. And they sampled as far as across the street and, and right here at the edge of the legacy apartments. And they reported this information. They knew this information was provided at EPA. We're almost certain, EPA is not certain. They were told about this until a year later. But it looks like EPA had this information earlier. A year later, so that's the groundwater assessment I was talking about. The work was delayed. They produced a report in 2020, in 2021, but they had, they had the data in 2020. They found benzene at very high levels in certain locations, as much as, as far as I showed you across the street. So EPA, so this, this report was provided. We found out about it in October 2021. That's the day of the report. But the work was done a year earlier. And that year earlier, in, in 2020, EPA started the process of this five-year review to look at the effectiveness of a remediation. So.
Why did it take 10 years to gain access?
All we know is the PRPs consultants, Hercules's consultants couldn't get access. Whoever owns that property wouldn't grant it under whatever conditions. And in my experience, I've worked for private industry a long time ago with problems, as an owner of these problems. And I was, one of the first light bulbs that went on in my head when I was early in this kind of stuff was, okay, if the EPA and the state tells us we've got to go onto somebody's property and drill a well and sample groundwater, and the people say, no, why don't the regulators make them take, make them let us do the work they want us to do? But I agree a hundred percent. They, they don't do it unless it's a last resort. And I don't think they actually prevailed in this case. I think it was the PR, Hercules's consultants and Hercules finally getting access. Ownership might have changed. Do you know, Rachel, if ownership changed? I don't know. Maybe they worked out a deal or pay me if, if you want to come drill holes in my land.
To my knowledge, the ownership didn't change.
So that's not the explanation either. But so EPA looks at everything in this five-year review. And in, in 2021, they were, produced their report. And they say that even though benzene's high over, and for, for, for a long time, it's been very high in that well close to the landfill. But now more recently, they know that there's further offsite. You know, right next at the landfill, there's always been high benzene in the groundwater. But now they found these high levels much further away, across the street on other people's property. But EPA, you know, one of their main findings is groundwater migration is under control at this site. When Georgia EPD reviewed the draft report, they said, sorry, guys, we don't agree. There's a letter to that effect that's included in the final report of EPA. It's about the last of, you know, 100 pages or whatever. But it, but Georgia EPD said, we disagree. EPA stuck with it. The final report came out saying current groundwater migration is under control. So last fall, when GEC asked me to look at these reports, we looked at it. I talked to people at, at Georgia. We talked to people at EPA. And we ultimately had a virtual meeting with EPA, GEC, myself. And we talked about it. And they said, yeah, this is, this is of concern. This is of interest. And we're going to require additional investigations out there. So right now, Hercules's contractors are developing a plan to go out and do some more study. And that's where you are on that one.
So, so there's not an independent study that these people that are paid for the study, I mean, it is done by their basically contractors or employees?
Yes, sir. And what EPA would do is review their work. It's just, you know, it's their process. They review plans for the work. They try to, the plans as strict and as good as they think is needed to be adequate to define the problem, to answer the important questions. And then they let them do it. And then they review what they did. And they, the big parts of the review of people's work, private sector's contractors' work, is, you know, did they do what they said they were going to do? Did they use the right methods? Is the data valid? And would EPA and Georgia have their technical experts evaluate the same data and say, we agree or we disagree? And frequently, regulators will say, you know, you don't have enough information to be so certain that that's not a problem or that the problem's only there. So they make them go back out. And it's very typical, I mentioned earlier in the presentation, remedial investigation, the very first phase of this process is sometimes frequent loops, interactive loops, where you go out and you investigate, you report, regulators say, you didn't do enough, go here, go there. We have uncertainty in these areas, go back. And so there can be, so this is an example of that. Here's a second stage of offsite investigation. It's very unfortunate that they didn't do anything for 10 years.
So Hercules remains liable to all this stuff that's going on?
Yes, sir.
One that's comforting.
They do. So additional plans are being developed. We don't really have a timeframe on that, but it shouldn't take long for them to propose. It's not a large area, but I want to go back to the map for this site and show you that. What they're thinking is, this dotted green line is, is what the contractors for Hercules said. So here's the limit of our contamination. And it doesn't hold water because most of their limiting line is totally uncertain and dotted. That's how they denote that. But what we don't know, we know the contaminated groundwater is flowing this way. But we don't know really what's going, we don't know the geology here, the distribution of the different kinds of sedimentary materials. And so this area needs to be investigated for, to understand what the layering of the soil materials are. So because that determines how groundwater flows. And then, you know, how far is this contamination? And the primary, right now, the main potential exposure route, you know, it's not drinking the groundwater. It's possibly if the contaminated groundwater of high enough concentrations gets to the area where you have residential structures or other structures, especially with basements, which y'all don't have a lot of basements here. But, but you can have vapor intrusion from, so the contaminants can, the volatile contaminants like benzene is, can vaporize out of the groundwater, just like you smell it when you pump your gas. You smell benzene and other chemicals. And it can get into, into air, air indoors. When you run your heat in the winter, nobody's house is really tight. And hot air escapes and it sucks cool air in. If you have a basement, it sucks a lot of air in the basement, especially where your, there's cracks. Sewer utilities enter your house, where the concrete block wall meets the poured slab, you know, that's a crack. My basement floods and it also sucks up a lot of air too, I'm sure. So that's the potential, most likely potential exposure route at this site. And so I would think that the new plan, it will include a vapor intrusion assessment. And you can go around and sample the gas in the soil and get an idea of, do I have benzene in the vapors in the soil above where the water table is? And that's one indicator, and you can sample indoor air. And one thing about vapor intrusion studies, you have to really, you can't just go take a sample, find nothing one day and say, we have no problem. Seasonal variations, the temperature variations, high pressure and low pressure systems in your area, tidal fluctuations impacting the groundwater flow, there are a lot of variables. So multiple sampling over a period of time is the way to really determine whether you have vapor intrusion issues. So those are the kind of things, if I were to work on this in the future, and GEC is not currently funded for this project, for me to work on that. If they paid for my assistance on this from another source of funds. So if I continue to look at this to help them, that's the kind of thing I'll be looking for.
The, so are there any health assessments around these sites that have been done?
Originally, you know.
For, for the people?
Not recently, not since the remediation of the site. Now, in, in this, in the EPA five-year review that I mentioned, that they just finished, there's a kind of a quick and dirty health assessment based on.
That doesn't sound good.
It's very, and it says in the five-year review, it does say, this isn't a thorough human health risk assessment. It's based on a limited amount of data and some assumptions. But that's what I'm saying, you know, to go to the next step, they should determine preferential pathways, if they exist. Where is the contaminated groundwater flowing? How much benzene is where? And then they should look at close by structures that might have a vapor intrusion possibility to happen and to assess ground, the soil gas vapors and indoor structure, air quality, and look for benzene. And, and that's what needs to be done to have a more, a higher level of security and confidence in your, in your assessment for a potential human health risk.
You mentioned about funding. TAG grants are no longer available for these sites?
Rachel could probably answer that better than I.
For Hercules 009 and Brunswick Wood, which is the last one, because they're in the operation and maintenance and they don't have active remediation, the EPA, basically, they, they don't have technical systems grants during that phase. It's usually for the very beginning processes. And then once they get to the end, they sunset those grants. So these two, Hercules 009 and Brunswick Wood do not have technical systems.
The other ones do, the other two?
And are you going to move on?
We, I'm looking at the clock, you know, it'll take two minutes to just say about Brunswick Wood, but you could talk about it if you want.
The only thing that I want to add from the Glenn Environmental Coalition, I remember he's, you know, third party consultant for GEC. But speaking for the GEC with this site, this is a new and developing situation. And at this time, we don't have enough information to know what those human health risks are. So we want to share this information with you and we will keep you informed as we continue to learn and as monitoring continues to take place. But if, as the EPA engages and they start traveling again, this is really a situation that we do see deemed as urgent, that they need to investigate and they need to understand what's happening so that if there are human health risks, they're addressed immediately.
So it's possible that GEC might obtain funding from EPA for both the Hercules 009 landfill and Brunswick Wood preserving sites. If there's any issue that is, raises a level enough to, that EPA could be convinced, hey, the citizens need to know more about this. Let's, let's provide some grant money so GEC can facilitate keeping the community informed. Because at Hercules, new work is going to be done. And this is a whole new, whole new situation with proven offsite groundwater contamination as far away as across the street on other people's property. That's a new, that's a new deal. So the Brunswick Wood preserving site is closed, O and M. There were, there was, you know, a lot of creosote kind of activity going on, taking care of wood and railroad ties. Basically, for this site, it's been closed for a number of years. They dug clay trenches around the two areas. They call it the eastern and western containment areas. Compacted clay, covered it with clay, revegetated the site to try to basically create a sealed bathtub where the contamination's inside. And in that way, protect the surrounding groundwater. They put people nearby on, on public water. And just this week, EPA has been sampling groundwater for their monitoring wells that are all around the site. They're starting their five-year review for this site. And in a year, about a year, they'll produce another report like, like they did for Hercules 009. They'll be producing a report to say, we studied it, we got the new data. We think that things are okay, or we have a problem. Now, the thing about this site is, in this area, correct, Rachel, this is the southwestern area that's, there's some, and that's the creek that goes off the site.
This is Perry Lane Road, right?
Yes, sir. Yeah, that's Perry Lane Road, correct? So there's a bridge here, there's a, over the creek. There's an area of residual subsurface contaminated soil, that's creosote containing contaminated soil, that's outside the containment. soil, that's outside the containment wall that they built. They tried to, first, when they found some of that, after they built the wall, they tried to go in with a soil stabilization method where basically you take a big mixer, you mix up the soil, putting cement, bentonite clay maybe, other materials to again, to try to create a stabilized material that doesn't leach the contaminants when groundwater flows through it. And it didn't totally work because when you go out there and stand near the creek, near, near where the Perry Lane crosses it, you, now and then you see little amoeba-shaped globules of, of blue film, you know, floating by. And that's evidence of, of the oil and the creosote leaching from this outside of the contained area, uncontained material. So it'll be interesting to see what EPA's five-year review in a year from now says about this. The most recent groundwater, when I first started working on this a few years ago, there was funding for me to work on this, and I looked at those, the recent groundwater monitoring data, because they, annually, they monitor the groundwater. And wells in that southwestern area have elevated levels of certain contaminants that are typical contaminants from the creosote.
Who's the responsible party?
That's a good question, you know. It, it might have been an orphan site that EPA paid money for.
I, I think that's what it is, because Brunswick Wood Preserving has been gone a long, long time.
Long time. And typically, those are local operations, not part of like Honeywell or Hercules.
I do remember one of the plant managers out there, but it's been, I'm pretty sure that it was taken over.
I tell you, that's a hick of an industrial site. It's served by two rail, rail lines.
Oh, yeah.
That's unheard of.
And it's a, it's a nice looking area, and they revegetated it nicely, it's, it's, it could, it could be used for a lot of things.
I heard the EPA or EPD or somebody wanted $16 million or something, or somebody wanted to.
Did they get it?
No, it's still sitting there.
So that's, that's the end of what I wanted to share with you all. And I'll try to answer any questions that you have. And I apologize for not being able to give you specific answers to some specific questions, but I do, I promise you, if there's a specific thing you all want me to get back to you, we'll run it down when I get back to my office, and I'll, we'll get back to you. And if, and if you come up with something next week or this weekend, you all have my business card, you know how to get in touch with Rachel at GEC, and, and we'll follow up and, and answer any questions y'all have about it. And we'll take any other questions you have now.
Rachel, would you send us, the thing that's coming out today, the design for the Terry Creek?
Yes.
Alphal ditch?
As long as it does in fact come out today, yes, sir.
Okay. I, I, I'm confident, it's the Cadillac model that wasted.
Frank, which way is the benzene going on 009? You showed it, but I'm going to be sure of that.
Right now, in this report, there's a map of, of their inferred groundwater flow, but it doesn't have enough points to really be accurate, fully accurate. So right now, groundwater is, they have, they projected it's flowing like this. And it could be flowing like this, you could have contamination flowing from here, because they, they didn't sample down here, they didn't sample in here. There's a lot of unknown, but, but what the limited data shows over the limited area that they've studied is that groundwater is flowing like that.
In that example, of the Magenta outlined, which is 240 merchant weight parcel, if they did go on and test, does then the owner of that parcel become liable for the remediation of that, or does that fall back to hurt them?
In this case, EPA would look at historical air photos, any kind of documentation, did, did any industrial activity ever go on here? Doesn't look like it. They, they do research and they would determine if they find other parties, maybe somebody reported midnight dumping there, I, you know, but they'll, they would research things, as would the state would, and they would, based on the information that I know is available currently, the, the dumping of the liquid waste in the old sand pit is the only potential, only likely cause of any contamination that would be in this area.
But if, if unsuitable material, unsuitable levels of, of any toxins were found on that property, it would make that property unmarketable, right? Is that part of the reason why you have resistance to allow testing?
They would have to disclose it, yeah.
Too explicit, yeah.
It would have to be disclosed.
Sure. And, and that's why people say, you know, if, if I don't look, I won't find a problem.
I think there's a little problem like that on Highway 17.
That was probably light agricultural out there was what it was, that means pigs and whatnot in, in that area.
And, you know, typically, when, in my experience.
I don't remember any industry being there.
When I've seen situations like this that appears to be undeveloped, never used for industrial activity, but you might have had a farm, and a farmer might have had a gasoline tank, and it might have leaked, and benzene is something you get. But if you look at this and you consider that and you think, how many years ago would it have been, would the benzene be degraded? You know, it's.
Find out why.
You find out what you can find out and you make a determination. And if there's somebody they find that used to own property that maybe did something, EPA sends the circular letter that says, we're concerned that you might have caused a problem here, provide all this information. And it's, you know, it begins the legal track to becoming a PRP, a potentially responsible party. In this case, who knows what they'd find when they did record searches and historical research.
Man, I'm just glad I'm here, because I used to, like Johnny, used to play with that mercury when we were little kids.
Oh, yeah.
The thermometer. Lead, lead and mercury, whatever you had, fascinated you.
Well, you know what they say, the dose makes the poison. And that's when, when I talk about the exposure scenarios that you can, you come up with. So if you were a baby and you were playing in the dirt and there was globs of mercury and you kept doing that through your childhood, you would have had a lot larger dose, because it can go through your skin, babies always put their fingers in their mouths. If you were a young married couple that moved to a place like that, never had any children, you'd have a different dose of whatever contamination might be there. So I'm glad you didn't receive.
I think I just worked with one broken thermometer, was all.
Sure. My mom tells me, you know, when she went to the dentist, they, they rolled it around on the tray to entertain them. Y'all might remember it, she's 98, so none of y'all are going to remember that.
They doing the testing behind the school there? Anybody in the school system or?
Rachel, help me out.
That's what got the school.
There's two monitoring wells, Frank, can you point to those monitoring wells on the backside of the Golden Isles Elementary, the little dots there?
There?
So there's two monitoring wells there, and then they have sampled soil in the past and removed soil in the past from the forested area on the backside of that property. But most of the investigation in that area, the very detailed investigation was in the 90s. They have not done a very thorough investigation recently, especially in regards to the groundwater.
Big deal in your school there, you're big to the groundwater.
That was one of the type reasons they met the school.
Now, Rachel, what's the new development going on?
And then there is, this is a picture that's from one of the reports, it's dated October 28th, 29th, 2020. There is a new residential development that is, has gone in just south of Altama, along, there's some on Nick's Lane and I think Branville, something lane, and yeah, that, that whole piece has been developed at this point, so.
And one other thing about this site, in EPA's five-year review, one of the factors that they cited as helping the remedy be effective is the fact that the automotive dealership paved this part of it, and that prevents water from infiltrating, helps prevent. And so that's better than just the, the clay cover soil that EPA had put on there. So I'm uncertain about this, because my initial funding for, oh, I have had no funding to, to do this, other than what we just did. So I don't know, but there was potential waste disposal down here in areas that isn't covered by their concrete, so that's an, or asphalt, so that's another factor that, you know, a good thorough, close investigation of this and would, might tell you, hey, you know, we think, based on the old maps, they had, the pit went down to here and they filled it with waste, so we really should sample groundwater down here and look for flow in other directions.
Well, thank you so much for your report.
Mr. Thompson, thank you for providing it to us. I know with COVID, the EPA and EPD have not gone out to make these type reports. Felt like it was important for us to take the information, for some of us, we've been on the boards for a long time and know, know a lot of this stuff by heart. For other of us that are new, this is a great opportunity to understand the environmental issues that our community faces.
Let me ask you a question. Frank, how, how much time do you spend in Glen County?
I haven't been down here for the full two years of the COVID shutdown. In fact, this is my first business trip since March.
So the last time you were here, I saw you there.
Yes, sir. We gave briefings, public availability session at the, the College Water.
Right.
Building. I believe I've had three trips since I first was contracted to work on this. We came in November, the first year, we got a good tour of stuff. I came again, I think twice, and then, so over five years or something, I've been here three times.
And historically, we try to make sure that he's in town when the EPA is here, but obviously the EPA's travel has been significantly restricted. So we got to the point where we said, are we going to keep waiting for the EPA, are we just going to bring Frank down here? And so here he is. We decided to not wait any longer.
And, and these are, I'm sorry.
Is Angela Miller? She's just not in about it.
Yeah, she is, yes. She's still with the EPA.
Hard for her, probably. Sam Blue, it's not enough time.
Yeah, and I did speak with her today, and as Frank mentioned, the EPA is hoping this summer to be able to come visit in preparation for some of the construction that's supposed to start on both Terry Creek and Halsey Creek.
And the, the limited funding that organizations like GEC gets, I, I've worked for a number of them over the years, and there's a similar program in the military department, the Defense Department, that it's limited. So I, we always work closely to, to try to maximize the efficiency and dovetail trips. When I work for some other clients, you know, they call me to do things and field investigations in sites all the time, willy-nilly, but we really work hard to make it, you know, get a real bang for the buck. So we, we usually try to combine site visits, briefing some of the EPA people, and public meetings and whatever else we can, whenever, when I come to communities like this, on these, these projects.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, sir. And again, thank you guys for showing up and coming to listen and, and understand, I mean, the fact is, we have four works to run, five sites in our community. We need to, as officials in the city and the county, continue to monitor and see what's going on and make sure that people understand what's going on. So thank you all for coming today. If there's no further questions, we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting, because it is late. Any questions? All right, if not, it's adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Have a good evening.